I want to welcome everybody to our Fountain Lake School Board Community Forum. And we're glad to see you all here tonight, and the fact that you're here means that you care about this district. You care about the students, faculty, staff. You've all got different places in the community that you fall with this school district, but we're glad that you're all here. I want to introduce, my name is Dana Greason, and I'm currently the president of the school board. Our other school board members here tonight would be Sheila Ford, who's the vice president, Beau Robertson, Cindy Herring, and Dan LaMontaigne is our other school board member, and he couldn't be here tonight because of a work conflict. We also have Dr. Michael Murphy, our superintendent, with us tonight, as well as we've got Hayden back there in the back, our director of support services, and Mr. Campbell is over here. So we've got all of our admin here, and we want to welcome you to the community forum. But before we get started and turn the floor over to you for questions and comments, I want to give everybody a few ground rules for our time tonight. We are planning on being out of here no later than eight, so we would like to make this as efficient as possible and so that everybody can have a chance to speak that wants to. The first rule is, smile, you're on camera, because if you can see these guys back here, we are recording this event tonight. We're doing that so that the folks who couldn't be here will be able to watch it from the school's website, or maybe even some other mediums. So we want to remind you that your language needs to be appropriate for all ages. Your cellphones need to be on silent, and if you have to take a call, please just excuse yourself from the auditorium to do that, so it's not distracting. There are, thank you, Dr. Murphy, there are two microphones here. You will, if you want to speak, we ask that you would come to one or the other and state your name, and then give us your comment or your question. And we will, at that time, ask for a show of hands from the audience, because maybe some of you have the same exact question. So in order to avoid duplication of questions, we'll ask who might agree with that same comment or question, so if you'll just, with a show of hands at that point. We are giving you a very strict, excuse me, strict five-minute speaking limit. So if your comment or question can be addressed by somebody up here on the panel, we'll do that. If it's something that needs to be researched, we'll tell you that, and we'll get back with you. Be respectful and polite. We're going to honor your right to speak, but you need to give others their right to speak also. Don't interrupt those people around you by talking or whispering loudly. Let's all give them our full attention, just the same as you'll have full attention when you're at the microphone. We need to, whether we agree or disagree, we need to listen to each other respectfully, because we might hear something in what they're saying that makes us think differently about an issue, or gives us some new insight. So we ask that you would be respectful and polite to all the speakers. We're going to focus on issues and not the people. So we will not talk about any individual, staff members, administrators, or board members. A public forum is for discussing issues facing the school district. So if you attempt to speak about a specific person, you will forfeit your right to continue to speak, and we'll be asking you to sit down. Let's make the most out of this time. You know, this is the first time this school board has done this, and we want to exchange ideas with you, we want to talk about the things that are important to you in the community, and we don't want to ruin it by having somebody be combative, or bringing a hidden agenda, or trying to trap somebody in an answer. Let's just don't do that. We're all here for the betterment of the school and the district, and so we would ask that you would just keep that in mind. And by the time we leave tonight, we hope that we have answered some of your questions, or heard your comments that you need to make. So at this point, I am going to open up the floor, because we want to hear mostly from y'all. It's not going to be about us doing all the talking. So if anyone wants to get us started for the night, we would ask you to come to the Before we do that, will you, Dr. Murphy, everybody should have gotten a handout when you came in. If anybody needs the handout, would you raise your hand? And we've got some student council members that can bring a few in, they're coming. So we've got a couple over here on this side. And it's pretty self-explanatory, but if Dr. Murphy would like to just briefly hit some of the highlights on there for you, and then, then we will open up for questions.
I think the intent behind the opportunity for conversation in the forum is kind of addressing the financials. You may have questions around the financials of the school district, that would be a potential area of topic, whether you can see real estate property assessments been relatively flat since '11, declining per pupil expenditure, showing a slightly deficit spending budget over the next three years, questions regarding our millage rate historically, there's been no base rate increase since 2013 related to teacher salaries. When you look at legislative issues, I know the legislature is kind of looking at the element of an unfunded mandate moving the minimum wage target. So the district is having to contemplate how we're going to deal with that, rising annual cost of health insurance benefits, as well as unfunded mandates associated with special education numbers, and counseling, and additional paraprofessionals. You know, some of the things that the district has, current and future district needs must be addressed, you know, we really want to strive to increase the level of support for our teachers around professional development, the investment in our teachers, and we are dealing with issues pertaining to retainment of teachers. We want to retain high-quality teachers and not lose them to neighboring districts, continued investment in the quality academic programs for improving student learning, and then, of course, probably the greatest physical constraint we have is around food service. We have one cafeteria for 1,400-plus students, and continuing to find out solutions for food service as we continue to grow. You know, I don't want to read each and every one of those things, but a few things that I would highlight that the district has attempted to do to kind of get to this point in time. You know, I'm kind of two and a half years into this role, and that first year was solely a discovery phase, and so shortly after that, we partnered with an architectural firm and have worked to provide a overview of the 19 facilities we currently have. We have 19 buildings on our campus, 32-plus acres is currently developed, and we have well over 100 acres that has not been developed yet, but it has its challenges in terms of topography. So part of our discovery phase is looking at what's buildable. We've purchased land in the last year and a half, 20 additional acres, you may have questions around that. But really, tonight is about providing you an opportunity to ask questions directly to us, see what we can do to respond, and if we cannot find a solution here for you tonight, you just need to respect the fact that we will research it, we'll take your question, and we'll try to provide a written response as soon as possible. But, you know, our intent is to be here to listen to you this evening, see what questions that you have at this point in time. I would tell you as a leader, this is my 15th year as a school superintendent, and you always manage the existing money you have first. And this Board of Education takes that very seriously in terms of managing a budget and working within their means, and we've continued to do that since the inception of taking over and having the opportunity to serve the community. But as we continue to grow, we are perplexed in maintaining our charter school programs. We have some exceptional programs here in the district, but to, you know, be able to fund equipment and professional development, it requires resources. So with that, I'm going to stop, turn it back over to Dana, and so I've kind of went over this sheet, and here again, anyone coming in late, hopefully you've been able to pick this sheet up. Thank you.
Let me just clarify, your questions can be around anything on the sheet, or anything at all. If you've just got questions or comments that you want to the board and the administration to hear, we would like to hear from you. So I'm going to give you all a minute to think about it, and if anybody has anything, please come to one of the mics. Because if not, we can, we can sort of lean talk and take up that time doing some more explanations. By show of hands, how many of you came here to, how many of you have heard the discussion about a millage, and that's why you came tonight, was to learn more about the millage? By show of hands. Anybody? By show of hands, did you come for another issue, or are you ju, did anybody come here for, you know, another issue to hear about? Are there things that you would like to hear us speak to you about? Other issues? Yes, sir?
My name is Jerry Vaughn, and I built most of these buildings on this campus, and I went to the bid opening at the bus barn, the addition of the bus barn, and I was quite discontent in how it was handled. If the school is strapped for money, how can we run any representation from the administration there at the bid openings, which the bid opening didn't take place? The contractor was hard, all of it was done in-house, and I've never seen a bid handled like this in my 50 years in construction. So how can you ask the village when you're not guarding the money that you have?
Okay. Thank you for that question. This is Jerry Vaughn, for those that couldn't hear, and he asked a question about the bus barn expansion, and the bid letting process, and how that evolved in terms of the, you said there was, there was not a bid opening process?
No, I waited for 20 minutes, and he finally came, the contractor, and I kept asking him who was, how many bids he had, and I asked who the architect was, he said it was in-house. And they did most of the work in-house. He was left with a blank, blank check, basically, he provided any numbers in it. So I kind of blame the school board for letting this happen, and I was fully aggravated at the way, I've never seen a bid opening like this in my entire life.
So that individual that you were talking to was Mosers?
Yeah.
And so they served as the construction manager, the Board of Education allowed that bid between Navaholtz and Mosers to occur, and it was $136,000 for the square footage and the build-out. And so they, in turn, allowed for the subcontractors to bid the job with them serving as the general construction manager. But the Board of Education did cap it at 136.5, I believe. That's what was voted on by the Board of Education.
Well, he told me they were doing most of it in-house. Something that he was not doing was, I think, electrical, and he said the school was going to do it. So how in good judgment can you ask for a little decrease when you didn't safeguard the tax money that was given to this contractor to do a job that wasn't even checked? You know, when you hire an in-house architect with a construction firm, it's kind of like putting a fox guard in a hen house.
I think, isn't Navaholtz one of the state?
The gentleman never said one word about Navaholtz. He represented his company as Mosers.
Correct, because Navaholtz's bid was $196,000, and the district chose the cheaper of the two bids. So both of them, both Navaholtz and, I believe, Mosers had an opportunity to bid the project, and the board saw both the bids, and they chose the cheaper of the two bids. So we had it specked in terms of materials and the job, and they served as a construction manager, because we were trying to accomplish that job onsite, and we didn't use a general contractor in that regard. And so they served as a construction manager to oversee the job itself, and it was a relatively small job in terms of scope. But the other bid was approximately $40,000 higher, wasn't it Hayden? Yeah. So we did, we did have multiple bids.
How, when did they bid, before, before the job was left? Because he told me he was the contractor. So how can, how can Navaholtz not give it after the fight?
We gave both construction managers the opportunity to bid the scope of work. We chose the dimensions, the size, and then they oversaw that, so that we would have the specifications covered through the engineering specs. They did all of that, so it was stamped with approval, so that we could conduct the building site. And so those two went out and obtained the bids in that regard, and I believe we advertised that openly, because we had to advertise it for two weeks in the paper by law, and so anyone else that would have wanted to have bid the project could have bid it at that point.
He didn't have any bids other than in-house bids?
And I'm not certain that I understand what you're saying about in-house bids, but we had two bids from, that the construction manager went out and got bids from the subs? Yes. But he, the construction manager, knew the limit of his, the scope of the project. So he had a budget that we had approved at 136 and some change, that then he went out and got the subs to complete the work. Does that, is that answering your question? I'm not sure that I'm addressing it correctly, but...
Not really, because when I talked to him, there wasn't another general contractor involved. He was the construction manager.
Yes, yes.
So I just think if you're going to build buildings, it needs to be handled professionally, and guard the taxpayers' money?
Yes, sir.
Instead of asking for money and then just letting somebody walk in and build a building and give him a blank check.
Well, we did not give him a blank check.
That's kind of what I, I got from him.
Yeah, but...
He wouldn't have any competition.
Well, there was another bid, but we had accepted his, for, yeah, as 136. So he did have a finite number that he was working against, that he had to complete using whomever, you know, he chose to, as a sub. But he did have a finite number that he had to work within. Thank you for that question, and I hope that we've clarified it a little bit. If not, we will be glad to follow up with you afterwards to see if we can further, you know, make sure we're understanding each side. And we'll move on. If somebody else has a comment or a question, we will be glad to hear from you.
How many mills are you questioning?
Mr. Vaughn followed up and asked how many mills we were asking for, and the answer to that question is, that has not been decided. We want to hear from the community about what's important to the community. We want to hear from our voting constituents. You know, it's still, there is nothing set in stone yet. We, we are doing this as part of our fact gathering process, and what's on the table could be anywhere from two to eight. I mean, I'm just saying, it depends on the level of things we want to accomplish with it. So that was part of the reason for doing this, was so that we could hear from the community what's important.
Do you get any state turnback money?
For facilities construction?
No, 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 just state turnback money.
You're talking about those foundation funding?
No, I'm talking about over what the millage pays in now.
That's foundation funding.
Yes, the, the state money. We only this year have reached the level, and let me back up, because there's some people in the audience that may not understand what you're asking. So let me back up just a minute on that. In the state of Arkansas, the legislature, through these lawsuits that they've had over several years, they decided that each school should spend approximately, let's say, $6,700 per student, that that was a fair and equitable amount that, of funding. Some districts don't generate that much in their property tax revenue, so the state goes in and makes up the difference, based on this formula, foundation funding formula that they came up with. Fountain Lake has always exceeded that, because our, our millage revenue off of property taxes always generated more than that per-student number. So the state never contributed money to this district, and that not only affected, I mean, didn't, we didn't get that money, plus, when you didn't qualify for that money, it excluded you from some other categories, okay? So that's what foundation funding is. It's meant to make all school districts kind of equal in their funding. Our per-student expenditures have been declining steadily, because our property tax, the amount of money we're generating through property tax has stayed flat, but our enrollment has increased steadily. This year was the first year we did not have an increase in the number of students. So based on, and it's always based on your prior year, so this school year is the first year that we have gotten any state foundation funding money. Now I think the number that the state gives to some districts, I mean, is the number like 67 and some change, maybe, this year? So a lot of schools get, you know, a few thousand, yeah, 6781. Fountain Lake is getting $155 per student this year. So it amounts to a couple hundred thousand dollars in our $13 million budget, doesn't make a big impact. But we have at least reached that threshold where our per-pupil spending has declined enough that we do qualify for money now. So out of that $6,700, we get 155, if that, so that, does that answer your question? We get about $218,000 over the course of this school year. That will be reevaluated based on our enrollment. We're going to be close to the bubble of qualifying or not, based on, you know, just any slight change in enrollment up or down. So, yes, sir, we, we did, for the first time, qualify for that. Since you did bring up the millage, and I know a lot of you are interested in that, let us, okay, Robin, you're up there. Okay, so, is she looking at this right here?
Just go ahead and pull up the agenda. Thank you. This was our last work session, this was on January the 10th, and these documents are available online, but we'll try to go through some of them with you here, and maybe that will stimulate some questions.
So, let's go to the, let's talk first about the registered voters. Why don't we do that? And then we'll come back. So let's look at item B, the registered voters, and let's just talk for a minute about how our population in our district is made up. Because this was an interesting fact, the board did not even realize when we first started discussing this. So, so as you all know, Fountain Lake covers two counties, it's partly Garland and partly Celine, and the number of registered voters, as you'll look at this slide, you will see that this data was pulled from the 2014, 2016, and 2018 voting years. In Garland County, you can see the number of voters who voted in the general and the primaries, and then you can see the Celine County underneath that, and down at the bottom, you'll notice there are 13,767 registered voters total in our district, total. Now, not that, not nearly that many voted in any of the previous elections, but there are 13,000. Out of that 13,000, approximately 72% live in the village.
Yeah, go to that other slide, Robin, you can show the diagram of the, that'll show everybody the geography and of that makeup of 72% of the voting population. I think Tracy pulled for me, currently, we have 247 students that come out of the village, and so we have a very skewed number of students in relation to taxpayers.
So we do. Yes, if you look at it, it's very imbalanced. The majority of our students come from Garland County. The majority of our constituents are in the village, from a voting standpoint, and from a, also from a property tax standpoint. The, the majority of our revenue comes out of the village, the majority of our students, or, I'll say the village, but that encompasses some of Garland and some of Celine. And then the majority of our students come from our community outside the village. So, oh, yeah, the blue on this map is the Fountain Lake School District, and you can see the village is outlined in red. So on a size-wise, there's more ground covered in Garland County, but the, the denseness of the population in the village means that a lot of our tax money comes out of the village. And that's one thing that the board, you know, has really undertaken as a thought process, we're going to do this kind of community forum out there also, but, you know, if we're going to undertake a millage campaign, we not only need to satisfy what do we want here, like, you know, maybe we want sports, and maybe we want new cafeteria, or new elementary school, or we may have this wish list that's really long, but we also have to balance that with the consideration of our, our friends and our constituents that are in the Hot Springs Village area that may not have children that attend our school. So it is, we find ourselves in a bit of a quandary there in terms of, there aren't many districts that look like us, where your tax comes from, basically, the majority of your tax comes from one place, and the majority of your students come from another segment of that district. So that is one of our challenges. Thank you, Cindy, I was looking for that word. It is one of our challenges that we need to balance, and that was one of the reasons this forum came up, was we want to talk to everybody and say, you know, help us find that middle ground. It's like, you know, the Democrats and the Republicans, they got to learn how to work together. So, you know, that's what we're going to have to do with our constituents, is work together to find the best solution. Because if we continue at the rate we're going, our budget projections show we're going to be deficit spending. Well, since we're not the federal government, we can't do that, because we would get in trouble by the state of Arkansas if we deficit spend over a certain amount of time. So we can't do that, and that means budget cuts, if we don't find a solution to what's facing us. So that's kind of where the millage idea was born. We know we have some challenges. We don't want to have to cut anything out of our current programs, because we feel like, if anything, some of our programs need to expand, like preschool being the biggest one that we want to expand. So there are challenges ahead as we face this. That's why we need your help and your input to decide, you know, where that threshold is, where that comfort level is. If you look at, since we talked about budget, Robin, if you'll flip back to that budget real quick, and if anybody has a question while we're going through some of these things, just flag me down or something, hop up and go to the mic. But in the meantime, we'll go look at the budget, and that, yes, the operating three-year projection... The operating three-year projection, us making the assumption that enrollment is flat, or did we make this, flat enrollment, and that, so the foundation funding would be flat, and, you know, all things, that there's no teacher raises, there's no, you know, there's nothing different in the budget than there is now. Everything kind of stays the same. You can see that, if you look at the bottom line for this 2019 year, can you see the very bottom line, Robin? Okay, so our revenue less our expenditures is going to result, that second column is this year. Now, we're not going to come in a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars short. We're going to try our best to make it come out, you know, break even. But you can see in the next three columns, years 20, 21, and 22, we have the potential to be a half a million dollars short on our budget. And a half a million dollars is hard to make up because the majority of your expenditures are surrounding personnel and people, things related to people and benefits. And, yes, sir, please tell us your name.
My name is Jason Lancaster. Back in 1990, when the last increase happened, what was the strategy back then to pull that one off? And next question is, how many students in Fountain Lake are we, I don't know, losing to other schools? Is there a number of that? That's my questions.
Now, what, your first question was, when the last millage happened, what was the strategy?
Does anybody remember what the strategy was back then?
Well, we have, we do have some former board members in the room, around the room, I see. It's been a really long time. And in the midst of that, there was a lawsuit from some, a couple in the village who, I won't go into all the details, but they filed a lawsuit against the school because we, at that time, we did not roll back our tax rate. It was a big, long story. Anyway, so it was held up for a long time in court. Honestly, I can't remember what the strategy was.
Is there one this time going around? Do we have a strategy in mind?
I think the thing that I would tell you that's fundamentally different, when you think historically, is the demographics of the village has shifted based on the growth towards the east gate. So if you visualize the picture, the picture conceptually in the mid-eighties was predominantly on the west gate of the village. And so that strategy in the nineties probably was a pretty even balance between people in the village and people in the community that voted on the initiative. I don't think your percentage threshold has shifted to the dynamic that we presented on the screen. Lake Balboa was built eighty-six, eighty-seven-ish. So the build-out in the nineties around Lake Balboa predominantly brought a lot of population into the eastern side, which that is the Fountain Lakeside of the district. So I think that dynamic is a shift. I have met with George Foshee, who passed three millages while he was in Jesseville District, and we really talked about those things specifically. And it's going to boil down to individual relationships and a lot of hard work. And so, you know, when I visited with the staff before Christmas, I commended them for their work engaging our parents. But we have this whole segment of our voting populace that may not be truly engaged to a level that we need them engaged as a voting base. So we view that truly as a challenge in terms of the strategy that we put together. The second question in terms of number of students that we may be losing, we currently have approximately a hundred and five students that are school-choiced into the school district pre-kindergarten through twelfth grade. The overall number, Mr. Campbell, I don't know that, we would have to probably research that to determine a number that have transferred out of the district, because I think that was your question, correct? We'd have to research that through our database and get a response back. Maybe we can put that question back out and give that response back through social media and put it on the website. We are designing, out of this forum, frequently asked questions and try to tie answers to those. So, thank you.
I want to say that I do appreciate your question, and thank you for being the first one to break the ice, to actually come up here and ask us something. Thank you. We do have a couple of strategies. We have a proposal one, which is more of an all-encompassing. We've asked for eight-point-three mills. It hits a sports complex. It hits multiple ingress egress routes throughout the school to get the majority of our traffic off of our pre-K and our elementary students that's right here in the middle. We also want to try to get this stoplight with an improved crosswalk. We do have some students that live just across the street, and it's kind of, it's actually very dangerous for them to try to walk across in the morning. If y'all have ever driven this in the morning, you know exactly what I'm talking about. It's absolutely nuts sometimes with some of the people that go through here. The second proposal that we have is more of a two, two-point-five mill that allows us to take care of our teachers right now. It's not so much the students that are leaving our district as it is our quality staff and our teachers, and that's what we want to keep. So the second-tiered, I guess, part of this would be, let's take care of our teachers, our faculty, and our staff now, and we'll figure out the rest the next year, the following cycle. I hope that kind of answers some of your questions toward the strategy. Again, I don't know what Robin's got up there. Proposal one, I believe that includes a brand-new elementary that is to be built, I believe, at the other end of Cobra Drive up by Fox Pass. That will also improve the access that we have on that county road all the way down to, what's the name of this one that comes out right here? Is that Fasing? That is also a county road. That's where a stoplight is going to go. The second part of that will be access or an exit just in front of the Fountain Lake Mall. Hopefully, we have a stoplight there as well, because that, it's not going to do us any good if we don't. The first strategy to this is to improve everything we have. It's a fail-swoop. We want to catch all that we can. We want to retain our quality staff first, build better facilities, improve the access around the campus, improve the safety so we're not having people drive back and forth right by our smallest children. And the second proposal, which is really what we're here, is to take care of our faculty first. That's why we are having this. We want ideas from you guys. If you think that we are missing something, stand up and tell us. That's why we're here tonight. So thank you for breaking the ice.
Beau, I'd like to just piggyback on what you have said. In addition to taking care of our teachers first, having been a teacher for many years of my life, as well as a principal, we have to keep high-quality teachers here at Fountain Lake. The second part of this second idea is to bring programmatic change to some of our classrooms. So we are research-based, and we are improving the academic outcomes for our students. That, for me, is driving my energy to make certain that we are doing the very best instructional program. And with that comes the cost of staff development. And we only have a budget of thirty-six thousand dollars. That's, you can't, that doesn't buy anything these days. So to maintain good teachers, we've got to pay them more, and we've got to give them high-quality staff development every time we come together to learn as a team. Thank you. I'd like to see a show of hands of those who agree with that. Yay! Good.
But does anybody have any other ideas as to what we might be missing? Obviously, Sheila hit it, teacher retention, quality teachers. We're only, we're losing them to our larger schools that, if we look at the millage rate, I believe we are thirty-four-point-eight. I'm, I'm, go ahead, sorry.
My name is Bob McCluskey. I live in Hot Springs Village. I served on the school board for eight-plus years. I'd like to share some information with you, some of which is not going to be pleasant to hear. One of the things that's happening as you're contemplating a millage increase campaign, we have a board election coming up in the village, which occurs before the school board election. There is a huge amount of dissatisfaction in the village, and it doesn't have anything to do with the school, but it puts a bad flavor in a lot of people's mouths up there. And it's over the internal operations and what's been happening there with their budget. They're facing a much more dire revenue and expense situation than the school district And it's only going to get worse. What's happening is a lot of the non-resident property owners are foreclosing or abandoning their property. Out of the thirty, roughly thirty thousand property owners, there are eleven thousand in default in the village. The village is not the savior of the school districts as it has been. It does contribute over sixty-five percent of the tax revenue which this school receives. I think many of us are going to support an increase in millage to support your education, and that's my only interest. I'm frankly not interested in your sports facility. I want to see academic improvement. For the kind of money that we're spending on our students, we should be expecting the same kind of results that Lakeside and Lake Hamilton are enjoying. They, as you no doubt saw their reports, they did better than Fountain Lake, and that's what we should expect. I will say, I am very disappointed that the pre-K was cut back this year. Pre-K is the foundation for education. I don't see how you can justify cutting it back. So that's kind of number one. Number two is reducing the number of choice students that we accept. I understand students want to come here. What most people don't realize is that students are paid for, their education is paid for by the district. You've mentioned the state contributes a hundred and fifty-five, plus there is some amount of categorical funding. But Fountain Lake, even though it has a low millage rate, the ULT revenue, each mill in Fountain Lake produces three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars in revenue. Jesseville gets a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two-and-a-half times or less. The only district that gets, well, I guess, three of them get more, Hot Springs, Lakeside, and Lake Hamilton get more, but they have three and four times more students. So you have to take that into consideration. Thank you.
And I want to thank you so much for those comments. And I want to address the one thing, the pre-K, unless, is there somebody that wants to talk about pre-K? Though you were right in that when we have school choice, we have two categories of students whom the state, so, doesn't give us any money, basically, pre-K and school choice. If we were a school, now, in pre-K, I don't care who you are statewide, the state does not fund pre-K. That's a shame. The legislature should do something about that, in my opinion, because it is critical to the develop, students who attend pre-K are way, way far ahead when they go into kindergarten. So, but, there is no money allocated from the state for pre-K. If you want to do pre-K, you do it on your own dime, which is what we've always done. And when we had a retirement in the pre-K department, we chose not to replace that teacher, and that eliminated one of our pre-K classrooms, and we had to hire another kindergarten teacher. It just was kind of a flip-flop between pre-K and K at that point. The other thing I was going to say is, school choice, we don't get paid for school choice students, except the hundred and fifty-five dollars. If we were one of those schools that got a lot of money, like we got six thousand dollars per student, then, yeah, school choice would be like, yeah, come to our school, we get another six thousand dollars for every one of you. But at Fountain Lake, we pay, basically, we pay for school choice students. But at the same time, the state puts very strict limitations on you for being able to say no. So they don't give you a whole lot of options for saying no to a school choice student. We're under a DSEG order in Garland County, so if it, obviously, if it messes with the DSEG percentages, then we can say no. But outside of that, it's, we're really hard-pressed to be able to say no, and yet we don't get any money for accepting them. And once you accept a school choice student, that acceptance is good through their graduation. They do not have to renew it every year. If you accept them in kindergarten, they can stay till they graduate.
The current pre-K program is a, it's a fully funded program. There's no charge for the parents to attend the pre-K program. The only caveat I would add to the pre-K component is ABC funding on a state level. We've kind of restructured our program to try to qualify for that grant funding. We've applied for that grant funding, and they're not accepting any new applications to that funding. So we're funding our pre-K programs at a hundred percent locally. There is some funding throughout the state for pre-K, but there's no new allotment of funds for us to be able to take advantage of those programs. So we're continuing to look for those funds on an annual basis. The other comment I would make in terms of capping, you have to have specific rationale for capping, more so than, for school choice, more so than other states, other schools in the state of Arkansas, because we are dealing with a federal desegregation policy which we have oversight with the Office of Civil Rights, and they monitor closely. And so they would, you know, we have capped grade levels, but we have to truly be full in order to cap them, and then we have to prove it. So, but we do monitor on an annual basis the school choice allotments that we're allowing into the district. Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, I found Mr. Lancaster's answer. For the eighteen-nineteen school year, we had forty-seven students accepted into Fountain Lake from other schools, and we denied sixteen. And leaving Fountain Lake was thirty-two.
Are those new acceptance?
Those were new acceptance.
So not including anybody that's been here since?
Right. And there were thirty-two leaving, and of those thirty-two, fourteen of them have never attended Fountain Lake. They've been a school choice child forever.
Thank you. Mr. McCluskey, I appreciate your comments. The assessment for Fountain Lake, I believe, was three-eighty-two. The difference between us, Lakeside, and Lake Hamilton, they get a lot more state funding. I believe Lake Hamilton is probably close to, I believe it's over a million dollars, is it not, Dr. Murphy, that they receive from their categorical? What we would like to do with this, sir, is just put a ten-year plan down the road. We understand that there are some politics in the village. There is some headache between Cooper and the residents within the village. But we also have fourteen hundred students that we have to answer to, regardless of what their address is. What we would like to do with this forum is set a plan forward. How do we get these kids that aren't even in the school yet? They're two, they're three, they're four. They might be starting pre-K next year. How do we improve our graduation rate from eighty-eight percent up to a hundred percent would be perfect, but I don't know that we would ever get there. But that is the goal of this board. We want to see all of the academics improve as well. But we also have to understand that there are parents that are into sports. They don't like busing their kids from here to Jesseville for practice every day for baseball or- baseball or softball. They would like to have that here locally, take some pride in their own facilities. We have to reside on both sides of this fence, if you will. But I would like to hear from some more people to just get this ball rolling. This is our community, this is our school. Let's speak up.
I have one question for Mr. McCloskey, and I too appreciate your nine years on the board. You were president, I think, my first year that I was elected. I, this may be an assumption on my part, but I kind of get the idea that you're putting out the question, is this the right year to have this millage increase? Should we be waiting until after things calm down in the village and readdress this with a really solid, you know, spend this year, reaching out to our constituents, trying to break down barriers, show some academic improvement, some new things that we're doing, supporting our staff development, and then come back next year? Am I reading into your comments?
Well, somewhat, but not entirely. I do not oppose doing something now, but I certainly want to see academic improvement before we go any beyond the first round of increase. To me, academic improvement is number one. And I would support your teacher salary increases now, but nothing beyond that until we have seen significant academic improvement.
I must say, I concur. That's my own personal experience based on decades in the field. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Verna Taylor. I didn't come tonight to plan to talk, just to listen. We've graduated three students from here, three children. My husband went to school here, his dad went to school here. I somewhat believe what Mr. McCloskey's saying, but I do believe this year is good for our teachers. I don't like lumping all of our students into a whole year on what the academics show, having two children gone to college, have a great education. I do feel like that we have to success those that we have succeeded. I know some of the numbers don't show it. I completely agree that we are losing some amazing teachers in the past and probably pretty soon. I believe that someone paid for my education, someone helped pay for my child's education, and I'm here to say to pay for the next person's education. So I believe as a whole, we have to do this, even if it is, like you said, partial this year, partial next year. But one of my also big concerns is the bypass coming in. With the growth we're looking at in the building we're wanting to do, and the road construction, and our new, say, lights in, outs, have we aggressed all that with the city to know what those options are going to be? Are we going to have to change anything that you're looking at doing now?
Your question is, with the bypass coming through? And with the expansion of Park Avenue, have we consulted with the city? You know, you do know we're getting a red light.
Yes, I knew it was, well, I knew it was talked of. I just didn't know, like, a deadline or a time or anything.
Yeah, it has been approved. There will be a red light at Fason, at the exit right there. That will only operate during school hours. It won't be like a, all day, every day. But it has been approved by the state.
Okay.
I think to try, I think you bring a point to the table that truly, as a leader, is a variable that we cannot predict. The influence and impact to road development. What we do know is that RDOT has approved three projects. They have approved a north widening going north towards the West Gate. They've approved the roundabout area that's tied to the RDOT project that will run directly in front of our school district and go all the way down past Fox Pass. And that's going to be a very nice improvement. It's going to be curb and gutter, we're going to have sidewalk, possibly bicycle path, three lanes. It really fundamentally will change the landscape out here and make us more of an urban environment versus a rural environment. And then the third prong to that is the extension of the expressway, which 4.3 miles will connect us back to the 270 loop. And it will really provide an artery for commuters to come out of our area to work anywhere in the Hot Springs area and no longer deal with going through the gorge or having to deal with going through Bathhouse Row. So what you bring to the table is really the engagement component. When I interviewed for this job, I saw that as really a variable that was difficult to predict. We're dealing with a student enrollment increase of well over 200 kids over the past five years. But the implications associated with the impact of roadway improvements is something you and I know, and it has the potential to influence new construction in our region over the next 10 years. And so a part of our job is to engage with BNF Engineering, engage with Modus so that they're talking to those developers with RDOT to make sure that we're making the right decisions along the way, and then at least frame a plan. We may not have the detail of the plan here for you tonight, but we've been engaged for the past year, and we've asked a lot of hard questions of these gentlemen, and they continue to have that open dialogue with us so that we can bring to the community some options and some viability in those options to where you can embrace them so that there's been a lot of homework versus no homework in that plan.
Thank you.
And one thing I want to follow up with is that when we talk about a millage increase, I just want to make sure everyone is aware that, let's say we approve a millage increase in May of this year, it does not go into effect until January, when the Tax Collector's Office sends out the property tax statements. And those are not due until October. So you are, even when you pass a millage, it's still at least a year, really, before you, yeah, before you start collecting on that. So that's also a factor that we're thinking about, because if we do continue this growth, if you think we've grown, okay, 200 kids over the course of five years, well, you know, that's 200 kids. If you put 20 kids in a classroom, you've just hired 10 new teachers. Or you've got to find space for that. Space is going to be a problem real soon. And, you know, how do y'all feel about T-b buildings? We used to have them here a long time ago. If we don't have space, yeah, temporary buildings are really the only option, you know, and how, yes, those are an option, and we did have those many years ago when my children were here and they were young. We live in a different age today. It's not, you know, school safety, a lot of people have a lot more focus on that, and temporary buildings are harder to secure in that respect. You know, there's a lot of emphasis placed today on making our schools safer for kids. So, you know, you need to think about those things. If we run out of space, you know, what do we do? And that's one of the challenges that we're facing. So just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Verna, for this.
I'd like to share one more piece of information with you. I mentioned the difficulties that the village is going through financially. As a villager, we pay twice as much in our cost of living here in school taxes than what we pay in assessment fees to live in the village. The village is a self-contained community. It has its own fire, police, road, administration, et cetera. Stop, think about that. We're paying twice as much to support this school as we paid as homeowners in the village to support our community. That's a very startling fact.
And from, you know, I'm sure every one in the village is of the perspective that with the current budget crisis they're having, that doesn't, you hope that doesn't change in terms of having to increase your cost of living to stay out there, because I know that's probably weighing heavily on people's minds. Any other, do we have someone else?
Let me just add to that, but in another direction. The village is also made up of a high proportion of well-educated retirees, and those folks tend to value education and are willing to put their money down for education, education dollars. And earlier, the gentleman asked, what's your strategy? I would strongly suggest that you publicize all the educational objectives you have that you wish to do with this new millage increase, sell it, and I'm sure they'll buy it. The idea that you've mentioned in here that you want to expand the number of pre-K would do a lot to offset the damage caused by cutting up back on the pre-K. So let them know where you want to go, let them know how you're going to get there with your curriculum improvements and higher standards for student attainment, and I think you'll be pleasantly surprised with village support.
Thank you. And can you tell me your name?
Tom Tyrrell, villager.
Thank you.
I think to echo on that, the CTE proposal out of Saline County followed that very closely, and that's going to be a $40 million facility that's going to support career and technical education. And the village voter turnout, according to them, was very, very well-supported from the village as far as education. So I echo the thought that we don't want to underestimate, if we can educate the village, I don't want to underestimate their willingness to support education.
Cindy just asked if we could talk about in terms of dollars. Let me answer this one thing, come to the mic, come on, yes. For every one mil increase on a $100,000 house, the property tax goes up $20 for every mil increase.
Per year.
Per year. So if your house is worth $200,000 and we increase it one mil. Yes, the assessed value of your house, it will cost you $20 per $100,000 in assessed value. So is that the question you had? Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Charlie Watson, my son goes to Fountain Lake, second grade. When I saw this, I was a little startled by that sports complex number. I agree, sports are a big deal. I was an athlete, and I actually went to Center Point right when they, we folded in with Amity, living in Amity. So I got a brand-new gym, and all that stuff is fantastic. But I look back, and I don't know if it was that big a deal, but I also saw the teacher-based salary there, which is a little bit, it seems like a travesty to me. I mean, honestly, I'm not sure how we expect them to keep anybody with that kind of money. I know, I see it goes up, I guess it's, well, that's your proposal, but, right. That bottom number seems like a better starting point, but anyway, I just wanted to basically say I am more, I don't like that sports complex number. I'd like to see more, I have no problem with new buildings, a new elementary, sounds fantastic. The parking is, and driving through this place is ridiculous on most days in the mornings. Well, I don't do much of the mornings, my wife does, but, so, yeah, that stuff I agree with. And I know this is just a proposal, and it's going to get changed many times, but, and I hope y'all update everybody as that goes along on the website or email or something if something changes. But, I mean, I have no problems with a millage, you know, it's, it has to be done. I don't know why it hadn't been done until now, but, I mean, we've only, I've lived in the village about six or seven years, my son's eight, so, you know, we haven't been involved in it that much, and so I didn't realize it was this bad. I mean, to me, it seems bad, I don't know. But that teacher salary is ridiculous to me, so, you know, that's where I, I don't really have a question, I just wanted to tell you all that, so.
And how many of you, show of interest, would be in agreement with his comment?
Thank you.
Did you get your name? Yes, we did. It's Charlie Dast.
I want to echo the fact that there's going to be a push to increase the minimum state teacher salary. And one of the reasons that we're looking at salaries so heavily is we do feel like that the bottom is going to be, we're currently kind of in the middle. And so if the bottom is pushed towards the middle, then we need to be, we need to be moving ours up. So this, that kind of goes with that unfunded element in the same manner as the minimum wage component. If minimum teacher salary increases, we really need to take those next steps to increase. And our base rate of pay has remained the same since 2013 at this point in time. Teachers do receive step movement. So anyone in the audience, all teachers are not frozen, but they would receive on an annual basis, just so you know what that would be. I think it's $510, new money that they would receive year over year. So that's the schedule. And then it would, once they get to probably 27, 28 years of experience, it would freeze.
Mary Sargo, welcome to my house. I don't say that to gloat. I've been sitting and listening, I retired on May 25th, and it's been interesting not to return to this place in the fall. But listening to this discussion and some questions that people have raised, I realized that there is no one sitting here now who can address many of those questions other than myself and Mr. McCloskey. It's nice to see you, sir. When you talked about teacher salaries and you wondered why they are so low, I can tell you that part of that has to do with a dearth of going for prolonged periods of time from five to eight years when teachers received absolutely no increase in salary, other than a step increase, it was worth somewhere between $250 and $350 a year. The last five years that I taught, there was no increase in the base salary. We received a bonus. And bonuses also were given over a period of years rather than step increases or rather base increases, and those are never added to teachers' contracts. It's a one-time gift, and it's a wonderful thing, but it doesn't do anything to improve the salary schedule for teachers. I served on the Personnel Policies Committee for 28 years, and I worked hard in negotiation with administration to try and improve salary schedules for teachers, and our classified folks did as well. But that's one reason why you see a base salary that is what it is. And when I started teaching at Fountain Lake, my first full contract was about $11,000 in 1979. So if you go from that perspective and you think about how little has been added, or we haven't always kept up with the times, we didn't have COLAs, we didn't have cost of living increases. So that's important to your staff. And I can tell you that in probably the last 10, 12 years that I was here, that I saw many good teachers leave. We would get lots of young teachers in. I call them young and perky, and they're cheap, okay? They're out of college, they're excited, they bring new energy, they bring new techniques because they're learning all the new stuff. And they stay here for a couple of years, and then they go somewhere where they can get more money. So it's important that if you do nothing else, that you get that two-mil raise and you pay those teachers. You need to increase the base, you need to increase what you do for education in lanes across as well, okay? That's important if you want to keep those teachers. Second thing, I liked what you said about sports complexes. I think that if you want to be successful in what you- I think that if you want to be successful in what you're going to do in your presentation with Hot Springs Village, you're going to have to have two very different plans. You need to look at that, and can we just see that elementary school figure? Roll up, Robin. Okay. You need to talk about those two things separately. If what's important is education and you have to choose, you need to talk about that building. And in your modus plan, you need to make sure that everyone in this community knows what you're going to be doing in the campus plan. It's one nice thing to say it's online and you can go look at it, you better be putting it up on that screen and you better be showing it to people in this community because they may or may not go to your link and look at that. That's very important and as a teacher, I sat in here and I listened to what modus had to say about what they were going to do. So they need to know why you have a K4 building that you need, they need to know why you want to have a 5.6 building, they want to know why you have a 7, 8, 9 suggestion and a 10, 11, 12. Because I guarantee you that 75% of your voters in the Fountain Lakeside are not going to go look at that. I know this community, I grew up in it, I taught a lot of folks here and I know how they think. There are new people, there's new energy, but if you don't do those things, you're not going to be successful. I was here when the lawsuit was going on. I was here when we didn't spend money because we had to save money to be able to pay it back in the event that we lost and we did. And it wasn't our fault, okay? But if you don't separate those things and make your wish list two-pronged, then I don't know what's going to happen, okay? Does that make sense? Mr. McCleskey, would you agree with that? Makes sense? Mr. Frank? I was here when your dad was on the board and we were looking at this kind of thing many moons ago. So I suggest that you might want to try that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Those are good comments. And I'm sure you have a lot of agreement with you there. Does anybody else have any follow-up comments to Ms. Sargo?
I have one to Ms. Sargo, but...
Okay.
My name's Corey George. You answered one of my questions, the price per mil for each property owner, which was roughly, what, $20 for every 100,000 a year, right? Which is minimal, I mean, that's not very much money. Another thing to point out, there's 53 people here tonight. That's pitiful. You're right. I know, yeah. But, I mean, there would be more if there wasn't games, but as a whole, 53 people that, there's more than 53 people not at games tonight. We got to get that up if we want the village passed. Okay, another question, the cap for the village. I lived in the village 27 years. I pay those property dues that you pay. The 65 and older deal, explain that to us, the cap for that. And then, you know, Mr. McCleskey, you said something about sports don't matter. When you got here tonight, those 53 cars, there's a lot more than 53 cars here. There's probably 203 through 6 playing basketball. There's probably another 150 in Malvern playing basketball. You know, the village, they don't care about the sports, I understand that, but this community does. If you drive by here on a Friday night, you remember what we were talking about the other night? You said, "Man, what the heck's going on at Fountain Lake tonight?" It's a basketball game. You go up here on a Friday night, you know, I graduated in 2000, I played all the sports except for basketball, it won't be in basketball, but sports is a big thing at this school. Am I saying we need $11 million for a sports complex? Absolutely not. I mean, is that something that has to happen? No. Would I like to see more parking? We have like 15 handicap spots up there. So basically, I drive my mom up to the top of the field, drop her off, come back, or they got the bus. But that 256 parking spaces, that's for up there, right? Okay. You know, the indoor facility, would it be nice when we're practicing baseball and football in the rain or not practicing? I mean, it would be. Does it stink having to bus your kids to the Boys and Girls Club? Yes, but to piggyback, I mean, I'm not stabbing anybody, but to this school, sports matter. Education, it matters. I mean, I'm a graduate here, I didn't go to a four-year college, I went in the service, got out. I don't have a degree, but I got a good job. So hard work will get you a good job, but, you know, I'm all for education. I got three boys here and, I mean, I'd do anything for them, but sports matter at this school, for this community. Is that the number-one thing? Absolutely not. But to this community, sports does matter. You know, you said it didn't matter, it matters. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, Corey. And you asked us to address the cap at age 65?
Yes.
Yes. What happens at the age of 65, property owners, wherever they live in Garland County or Saline or whatever, at age 65, the value of their home is frozen for assessment purposes. That means when they come along and they reassess, if assessments generally go up 3% to 5%, theirs does not change. That is one of the contributing factors for our village revenue being kind of flat for these years, is that even at reassessment points, we have, you know, Hot Springs is known, Hot Springs and Hot Springs Village are kind of known as being retirement, you know, having an older population, but it freezes at age 65. If there is a millage increase, they do pay the increase, but the value of their home does not ever increase. Or it can decrease. If the millages go down, the value of their, the assessed value of their home will go down, but it cannot go up after 65. But if there is a millage increase, yes, they, everybody pays the same millage rate.
Where's the assessment showing? 2016, I believe it was, the assessment actually went down for Garland County. That means your school loses revenue. I was looking for the, for the information where it actually showed what those assessments were based on the year-over-year, but I haven't found that yet.
Revenue?
Correct. The assessment rates.
I want to go back to our teacher salaries, which I'm so passionate about. We must not lose sight that it is our democratic responsibility to lobby our state legislature to pay more money for our educators. And luckily, Dana and I have sort of taken on that as our mission and will be going on Wednesday to have breakfast, lunch, and lobby about what we need and we need you to help us. So when you signed up with your email, Dana and I are going to build a message to you and give you telephone numbers and ask you to call your representative or your senator. We have a representative here today and I'm so delighted to see that you're listening, Mr. Gates, because we want our state schools funded at the level that will produce excellence in academics as well as excellence in sports. My soap op.
How many, Dana, how many teachers did we lose in the past, say, three years?
Didn't we lose 22 last year?
The question was, how many staff members have we lost on average since I have arrived here? We've been, you're talking about teachers, anywhere between 20 and 25 and we employ around 110.
Per year?
Yeah, we've been losing over 20 per year.
And that's not all due to retirement? That's...
No. A lot of them are...
No, I know, I know, I'm just making that fact.
Yeah. And most of them go to Lake Hamilton or Lakeside, to be perfectly honest. They have a higher, in the salary schedules, we are, we pay the same, well, we did pay the same as Hot Springs since they got their millage increase, I'm assuming they're putting some of that on teacher salaries, but prior to that, we paid the same as Hot Springs and Lake Hamilton and Lakeside were higher than us, so...
We actually moved our board meetings to the third week of the month so we wouldn't have to call special meetings because they have theirs in advance of ours and so we were able to take action following their meetings.
Yep.
So that ought to tell you something right there when we have to move our board meetings based on special...
We moved our board meetings because they would hire our teachers at their meeting and then we would have to get back together to approve to let them go. So we decided we'll just put our meeting after theirs and then we can do it all at once. But it was, it is a, it's a big deal. We're losing a lot of young, talented teachers and we want to change that. We've got about eight minutes left. If y'all would like, we can...
Do you want to talk about, okay.
If y'all would like, we can put up here, we're, we've been working with modus studios as our, they were the ones that went around and did our, they inspected all of our buildings, tried to give us an age about their mechanical and electrical and, you know, just really helped us do a long-range facility plan. And we are lucky enough to have them here tonight.
Well, hello?
This is Josh.
Yeah, my name is Josh Seibert and I'm partner at modus studio. We're located out of Fayetteville. Roughly a year ago, we got involved with your school district and so we were a general architecture firm that practices all over the state on different types of projects. When it comes to K-12 work, we do a lot of work for 20 different school districts and one of that is to assess the project, assess the campus, understand the district challenges. From day one, when we got involved with this board, they said, "You know, we're very concerned about our students, the general population of how many teachers are teaching per student, what types of facilities do we have, and so what does that look like for us?" So one thing that we do is we do a general assessment and in this case, we looked at all 19 campus projects and sat down and said, "Okay, let's look at the current conditions, ongoing maintenance, do the roofs leak, do the windows have problems, is there HVAC issues, is there general space requirements that are not being met?" And so what we did is, we've got two documents that we currently have. One, that's about 140 pages that go through every little bit of the assessment per, per building. The second one is also, we sat down and had a different survey to the teachers and said, "Hey, you know, what are you looking in facilities? What would allow you to teach better? Is it bigger space, more storage, is it more function? What would help educate the students from an interior versus exterior, outdoor classrooms? What other things would keep you being able to address your student needs?" And some of the things that we immediately found was a lot of your classrooms are very much undersized. Where you're dealing with classrooms that are 650 square foot, the state standard is 850. So we're already trying to operate in a smaller envelope than what state standards operate as. And so one of the things that we've done over the last year is went through each one of these facilities and that's how we started to arrive at how large a facility will we need to have for the new building. And as I said, we went through this assessment and we've created this ongoing document that starts to get into options. Options of efficiency, options of where should it go, what should we do, how do we make circulation on campus, from assessment of vehicular to pedestrian to where would it need to be with the property that you currently have. One thing, Jack, to your point was, you know, how can we be efficient with it and really manage the, the money the best way? We look at construction methods, location, site and infrastructure. We start to assess it in every capacity, not just what you currently have, but based on today's standards and what we're having to deal with, with what site we have, how do we be efficient with it? And this board has asked us to do that in a very thorough amount of time and effort so that we get it right. We have experience doing athletic facilities, academic facilities, all types. And so when we start to look at the athletic components, we also look at what's the efficient? Where would we locate it in the event that we're not busing up to Jesseville? Where would we locate it where the, the land allows for parking to be more adequate? One of the concerns was busing elderly, handicapped individuals to, what's the safest route to do that? Your district is very challenged. Topographically, you're very challenged. You have hydrology issues on the campus. You are built in a way that it has grown to its maximum capacity. If you think about it, you would probably not sit and design a campus that looks like this, right? It was a byproduct of adding over time. So one of the things that we always try to do is think about, okay, what's the next chapter look like? Are we doing the best thing by just adding into the valley or are we looking at, maybe we should go on Fox Pass Road, Cobra Drive, up on the hillside so that would give you a breadth, again, to not add to the problems that we've had, right? If you, if you put buildings in the hole, there's no space for that water to go and it, it keeps having issues over and over and over. If you add on to the current facilities, you know, what, what can we do with what we have? So some of the good news is, is that you have a lot of facilities that are in great condition. You've maintained it for years, you've been able to get to the maximum use that we can. But when we look at the new elementary school, what is going to be more successful for you? And we've built buildings now over the last 10 years in similar sizes and scales and we look at that efficiency and there's a lot of things that we think can be done better and that would add for that enrollment, that would add for the, the success of the teacher retainment, giving them adequate size and effort. So this is part of our effort and I think, you know, to your point, this is where we're headed, to this roadmap of showing that. Tonight is a, an effort to understand some of the heartbeat of the community. And Mary, I really enjoy your comments about understanding what this heartbeat is because before the board was to unveil this, we're taking all the data and collecting it before we're able to say, "Okay, we've got it right." We know a master plan document always evolves and change. We know that. We want to sculpt it based on the concerns of the community. And so we're in a draft process of this and it's still growing. We spent all day today, again, assessing kind of what the teachers were looking for, how can we be more efficient, what are some of the things that we need to invest in and talk about as far as land use. And so this is an ongoing document and before we go for that millage campaign, we want to make sure we get it right. So I just stand up, introduce myself, and again, the heartbeat of the board is, I work with, like I said, 20 districts and I have districts that are all about one subject matter. This district is about success, starts with the students, teachers, and it works its way all the way through. So I applaud not only people coming out and asking questions, but I applaud this board because we see it. And this one has got the right avenue. To your point, yeah, there always should be more people, but I know the people that are in this room are here because they do care and, and I don't really have to sell you on it, it's about how do we get the people that don't care, that won't come, that is a vote no. So for us, we need to listen. We listen first to the teachers, to the board. We're very interested in how we can help listening to you as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, Josh. And Mark, Coach Davis has a comment?
This one, I can't talk, but he...
That's okay.
It's 8 o'clock, but if you're going to put kids first, you got to put teachers first. That's the bottom line, so...
Thank you. We, like, like has been said already, this board has been talking about this for the better part of a year. So we have a ton more things we could tell you about, but we didn't want to overwhelm anybody or bore you to death, so we just kind of wanted to get you here, hear from you, because if it's something as simple as, "Hey, we're out of cafeteria space," and you see the board going, "Okay, well, let's just build a whole new school," but you don't think that's necessary, then we need to hear from you because we don't want to, you know, if you think we need to scale back or go forward, we want to hear from you because this is, this is the school, this is the community. So we appreciate very much all of you being here and for your comments and questions and if you have any after that you didn't want to stand up at the microphone and ask, feel free to catch one of us, we're going to be here for a few minutes. feel free to catch one of us, we're going to be here for a few minutes, and if not, watch for the next community forum, because we're going to do this again, we're going to have, we would like to make this just kind of a regular part of life around here, that every quarter, once a semester, something like that, we can get together and just have some time of sharing what's going on. So we very much appreciate all of you being here, and we are going to dismiss, and everyone have a good night.
Before we do that, can I ask one real quick question? What was the best, how did y'all hear about this? Was it the robo-call, was it Facebook, email? What's the best way to get the, the word out to this community?
Teachers.
Teachers.
Okay. Sending something home?
Hello, Dojo.
Dojo, okay, good.
Well, those of us who don't have you, but, I mean, you know, elementary is the best. When you send it to high school, you don't ever get those letters or those notes or what those teachers said. So, yeah, because Facebook did share, and emails shared, and just, community and the church, you know, gave their voice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for being here very much, and we'll be around...